Good evening and welcome to the Isleta Independent School District Meeting of Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the board that the public is allowed to attend. As provided by ISlet ISD policy BED, we invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens' input portion at the start of the meeting. According to the instructions provided with the electronic posted notice of our meeting, legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on the matters of citizen input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students and ask that we all conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Isleta Independent School District. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:05. We have a quorum with Mr. Shane Haggerty, Mr. Chris Hernandez, Mr. Mark Dwyer, and Ms. Connie Woodruff, and myself, Charlie Bustillos, Catherine Lucero, and Cruz Ochoa is excused, have an excused absence, sorry. Trustee Haggerty, please introduce the ROTC, JROTC.
Thank you, sir, and I like your jacket, second-best jacket that's being worn up here.
Thank you.
It's become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the pledges of allegiance, and then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the juror, the Junior ROTC Color Guard from the mighty Parkland High School. The Color Guard Commander is Cadet Colonel Madai Castillo. The other Color Guard members are Cadet Captain Sofia Pereira, Cadet Lieutenant Maureen Garcia, Cadet Lieutenant Georgina Guerrero, and our pledge leader is Cadet Private Abigail Mesica. Will you please stand for the presentation of colors, the recitings of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence, and then please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now please join me in the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. De La Torre, do we have recognitions and introductions this evening?
Good evening, Vice President Bustillos, members of the board, and esteemed guests. We do. I invite our Chief Human Capital Management Officer, Mrs. Bobby Russell Garcia, to lead in our recognitions and introductions this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. We have one recognition for you this evening. We'd like to ask all trustees to please come to the front of the dais. Audience members, please remain seated until the recognition is complete. Thank you. Tonight's recognition is in honor of the Del Valle High School varsity football team, which made history this year in the first round of the Texas high school playoff season. The team became the first ever from El Paso to defeat the powerhouse Cooper High School from Abilene, capturing this year's Class 5A Division II Bi-District Championship. The Conquistadores enjoyed an exceptional 11-1 record this year, going undefeated in the regular season for only the second time in the school's history. Their last undefeated season was in 2000. Their dominating 63-35 victory for the Bi-District Championship broke a historical losing streak against Abilene Cooper, which has previously defeated all El Paso football teams 19 times without a loss. The Conquistadores' resounding defeat of Abilene Cooper set a new precedent for El Paso teams in the state playoffs, potentially signaling a new era of heightened competition in the future. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome members of our championship football team from Del Valle High School, beginning with quarterback Jake Fedi, safety Ezra Rocha, offensive lineman Mike Reta, and Aiden Serna, and linebacker Max Iron. They are accompanied by head football coach Rudy Contreras and Assistant Principal Christopher Camacho. Let's hear it again for the Conquistadores. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Mathiason, do we have any citizens' input this evening?
No, Vice President, we don't.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to our board workshop. Dr. De La Torre, do we have any presentations this evening?
Yes, sir, Vice President Bustillos, we have two presentations this evening. The first is our internal audit quarterly update with Ms. Amy Sanchez, our internal auditor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. De La Torre. This is my quarterly board update. From our 2024 audit plan, we've completed since our last presentation, two campus audits and one non-campus. We've got eight campus audits that are right at the tail end of completing. We have started our final six campuses, which will take care of all campuses for the district, and we have four non-campus audits currently in progress. We continue to do our follow-up reviews, which are going well. Since our last update, we've done 10. Nine are fully implemented, and one is currently in progress. Regarding our fraud, abuse, and waste hotline, since September 3rd, we've received three calls or requests. One was personnel-related and forwarded to Human Resources. One resulted in an audit report. We included some procedural recommendations, but there was no substantiation of fraud. And one was reviewed by our office but was not fraud-related. Here's a summary of our hours so far. As you can see, and we'll discuss in a bit between our campus audits and non-campus audits, we spent more time than planned on campus and not as much on non-campus. Here's a list of the projects that we've completed this year and those that are in progress. Some that haven't been started will be rolled over to 2025, but over the next couple of months, we'll do our risk assessment and meet with various members of management to determine what we'll do. In the next few slides, I'm going to present some summary results of the campus audits. I'd like your feedback and opinions on if this is the type of information you'd like presented in the future and as a summary for the final 2024 update, which we'll give you in February. As a reminder, campuses, we look at a variety of areas. We look at cash handling, including fundraising. We look attendance, absence documentation. We've started to look at special education documentation, whether services are being documented and match IEPs. We look at loss of credit to make sure any reinstated credit for excessive absences has proper documentation with a good procurement card, as well as levers and withdrawals. This is a template for an audit summary. You'll recognize this from our audit reports. We begin each audit with this. Now, the reason I'm showing this to you is because in the next few slides, the numbers that we're presenting represent basically one line item, one finding. Although, for example, there may be one line item for ADA attendance coding, there may have been multiple attendance coding errors. So these next few slides will show the number of different types of errors that are being found in the campuses. This is just some statistics on frequency of risk-level findings by category. So of all the campus reviews that we've done, this shows the types of findings that we are finding. Procurement card, you can see procurement card, loss of credit, and levers aren't as high. Loss of credit and levers is primarily for secondary, so that's why the number will be lower there. And you can see the higher numbers are in cash management and attendance. And we have it divided by low, medium, and high, and you see high, there is a very small rate of findings that we have there. This is where the findings are being found as far as the school level, between elementary, high school, middle school, and other, other being your K through A, it's pre-Ks. So the high findings were only in elementary school. There was only a few of those. And you can see high school and middle school, of course, the numbers are going to be lower there because there's fewer of them. This is a list of the audits, the campuses at least that have been completed and those that we will be doing, the last few that will finish off for the year. And just if you have any comments or feedback, if you would like more detail or summarized detail like that, it's helpful.
Just a quick question. I know you cover all, everything that you had said you had covered. Do you have everything you need to be able to cover that?
We've got a full team. We're working great together. I do think we have all that we need. We'll never say no to more, but we are happy where we are. Just as a heads up for the coming year, and I've talked with some of management already about it, we are just about done going through all the campuses. There have, the campuses have made some great progress. We've had great feedback and cooperation from them. Next year, in 2025, we will kind of switch gears and focus more on departmental and process types audits. We still most likely will do surprise audits for campuses. We still most likely will do surprise audits for campuses, like cash counts, attendance, and whatnot, but those details will work out over the next several weeks. But just as a heads up, when you see our annual plan, our audit plan for 2025, it'll be mostly departmental-type audits.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Hagerty?
Looking into 2025 and looking at what you're going to be focusing on, can, does that include the high schools? And the reason I ask is because you had such a high number of incidents at the high schools. I know it wasn't as large as elementary, but we've got three times as many elementary schools as we do high schools. So for that number to be as high as it is, is that something that's a concern?
I think part of the reason, high schools have such a high volume of transactions, especially for fundraisers, than some of the smaller schools. And I think that's why we're seeing a higher incidence there. But you're absolutely right. We still will need to do some surprise cash counts, fundraiser reviews, that we will still do in 2025. And for those campuses that we haven't done follow-ups, that are just being audited now, we still will do the follow-ups. What is, what's good to point out is, of all the follow-ups that we are conducting, we are going in, when we come in the second time, we are seeing that for a majority of the campuses, they've resolved their issues.
And then have you been able to see a difference with more campuses implementing the cashless way of transactions?
No, that most definitely has helped, and the campuses are really coming on board for, and are eager and excited to go to more cashless. Of course, I don't think we can ever go 100% cashless, but as much as we can, most of the campuses are heading in that direction.
Are there any that are fully cashless?
The only one that I'm aware of off the top of my head is Edgemere. Is there? But more and more, they're getting there.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Sanchez. Really appreciate it. Two questions. First one, can you expand a little bit on attendance? Which direction is the error? And does this affect any funding, state funding that we would receive because of attendance?
Sure. When we look at attendance, we look at two different areas. We look at absences, so we'll select a handful of days for a particular six weeks, and look at all of the absence documentation for that day. We do find errors in coding, so, and whenever we do find errors where it does make a funding impact, we do point that out in the report, whether the coding error had an effect on funding. Of course, the individual one error isn't going to have a huge effect on funding, but it does, for example, if a student was coded present and should have been coded absent, then that does qualify as a funding impact. What was your second question? For those, if we audit, if our review, is it within the same school year, then all of the errors can be corrected. So if we did find any errors that had funding impact, that can be corrected. However, for example, at the beginning of the school year, the, our scope, our, the time period we're looking at has to be the year, the school year before. And if the school year's already passed, then corrections can't be made.
Which, a follow-up to that, which direction, is it usually the error that a student was present but was marked absent, or the student was absent but was incorrectly marked present? Or is it equal?
It can go either way. Oftentimes, I think the majority of what we find is, does not have a funding impact. And, for example, absent is coded one type of absence versus a different type of absence. So that won't have a funding impact, but when we're analyzing absences and want to key in on the reasons, it's important to have it accurately coded.
Thank you. And you asked us if we had any input or any, you know, other ideas, what we would like to see in the presentation. I think this is one of those, at least for me, you know, you don't know what you don't know. Can you tell us some options, or do you have any recommendations about what else could be presented for a workshop like this?
Not off the top of my head, but I can think about it, and...
I hope you don't feel like I'm asking you to recommend doing more work.
No, no, that's not, no, that's not a problem. Just, I do make sure and send y'all, when we do have those, the orange level, we haven't had any red level findings, but I do make sure and notify y'all right away with those reports if there's a significant finding made.
Well, I think it was a very good presentation, and I appreciate you always being accessible to us. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We have any other questions? We're good? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice President Bustillos, our second presentation is surrounding our emergent bilingual students, and will be presented by Dr. Brenda Chacon and our Director in Academic Language Program, Ms. Anna. There she is. I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I couldn't work the Godfather. Yeah. I know.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. De La Torre. I'm Anna Escada, and I'm the Director of the Academic Language Programs Department. And this evening, I will be presenting the evaluation for our bilingual education and As you can see, I'm a Mac, a Mac user. So to begin, we have, I have the 23-24 star EOC comparison with our approaches level. We have all the subjects here, reading, math, science, social studies, EOC 1, 2, algebra 1, biology, US history. Although we did have a decrease for some of our subjects, we did have an increase in a few. So if you look at our EOC 2, we did have an increase of 6%. For our algebra 1, we had an increase of 1%. And for our biology, we had an increase of 10%. As we go into our next one, which is our MEETS. We also see all subject areas, where we also did have a decrease from the 23-24, but we did have an increase too. So if you see our EOC 2, we had an increase of 12%. And our biology, we had an increase of 5%. And then last, we have our masters. And for our masters, overall, half of our subject areas, there was no change. So if you see for reading, 12%, 23, 2023, 12% in 2024, where we did have an increase, was in our EOC 1 with a 1% and our algebra 1 with a 1% increase. Our next slide shows our students after reclassification. Once our students meet the reclassification, they have an indicator as they progress throughout the years where we keep monitoring them. We have in this tables, we are showing first-year monitor students, second-year monitor students, our three-year monitor students, four-year monitor students, and five. It stops at five, but our five is our forever former EB. So even if they reclassified at the elementary, they will carry the five code in middle and high school. So overall, if you see the data here for 2024 in approaches, these are the percentages where students after reclassification have met. So in approaches, we do have students in reading at 90%. If you go to one of the top 90s, EOC 1, 92%, EOC 2, 94%, with our highest being US history. In the MEETS, we also have the high being in the 80, in the 91, EOC 1, in the 90s, EOC 2, and then our other subject areas such as reading, 86%, algebra 1, 87%, biology, US history, 88%. Then for our masters is where we go a little bit lower in 2024, with our lowest being EOC 2, 7% at the masters level. But then we have some of the highest, where algebra 1, we are at the 59% level. Our next slide is for our Tellpass, where we are measured with language proficiency in the four domains, listening, speaking, reading, writing, and then that is equivalent to our composite score. In 2024, we had 16% of our students in the advanced high level for our Tellpass composite ratings. We did have a decrease in two domains, which was our listening and writing. In listening, we had a 5%, I'm sorry, backwards, an increase. Listening, we had a 5% increase. In writing, we had a 2% increase. In speaking and reading, from speaking, we went from 12% to 7%, which is a 5% decrease. And our reading, we had a 2% decrease. Overall, at the district level, 2023, we were at 18%, and then in 2024, we were at 16%. Our next chart shows the total of students that we reclassified. This year, we had new reclassification criteria set by the state, by TEA, where our students were eligible to reclassify if their Tellpass composite score was advanced high. Previously, the criteria was for our students to be at an advanced high level per domain. So with this change, we were, we had the opportunity to reclassify students that were pretty much ready. So if you see, as the number got really big, we had 1,512 students that met the reclassification criteria. And that was with the change in criteria of advanced high. For our teacher certification, in 23-24, for our bilingual exceptions, we submitted an exception for nine teachers, where the total of 213 total students were in the alternative program. I included some notes there of how many teachers actually were able to take the test and apply for the appropriate certification. Of the nine teachers, we had one. And then one of nine passed, and since she was teaching at the elementary, the math and science, her certification requirement was an ESL certification. Two of nine teachers did not pass the certification test. Four of nine did not attempt, and one teacher had left the district. In addition, we did submit ESL waivers, and those are for the teachers teaching middle and high school, or a teacher in an elementary that's teaching a non-native English or Spanish speaker. We had a total of 24 teachers on the ESL waiver with a total of 251 students. 14 of 24 teachers passed the certification test and did apply for their ESL certificate. Two of the two teachers passed but did not apply for their certificate. Five of 24 did not pass, did not attempt the certification test, and two of 24s attempted but did not pass, and one transitioned, right after we had submitted the waiver, transitioned into a new position in the district. For this year, for 24-25, we submitted, on behalf of 11 teachers for a bilingual exception, and for ESL waivers, we submitted 17. The professional development that we offer is included here by topic. We have menus that we provide to our teachers in order to support our emergent bilingual students across the district, elementary, middle, and high school. So we had sessions with academic vocabulary, and you can see there the number of sessions that we provided and the number of participants that attended the sessions. We had literacy instructional routines across language and content, sheltered instruction, reading comprehension, and the program model. The program model was based on our dual language at the elementary campuses. As per the teachers pursuing their teacher certification, we did provide bilingual and ESL certification test preparation with a total of nine sessions, and we had 58 participants in total. At the beginning of the year, we do provide the parents the student progress, a student progress report to inform them of the placement that their student, their child, is currently in. And the principals have a committee where they review their campus action plan, where they include the improvement of student performance for our emergent bilingual students. That concludes my presentation. I don't know if you have any questions?
Mr. Hagerty, I'm sorry.
I was just curious, is there anything in particular you attribute the scores to, like the science scores that look like they dropped across the board? Was there one thing or a couple things that stood out as maybe why we didn't do as well in the science area that we usually do?
Science scores were low across the state. Science is where our kids are in the English language development time in our dual language program. So this is the only time during the day that they have English, so across the board, our scores were low.
Is there something the board can look at, discussing, providing, that would help enhance those scores?
Good evening, President Hagerty, President Hagerty, and President, Board of Trustees, Dr. De La Torre. Yes, so our science scores did take a dip. There's a couple things that I think we attribute to. Let me start on the RLA side. The drops on the RLA, we attribute it to, this is the first year, second year now, that our students take an ECR, Extended Constructed Response, or a Short Constructed Response. This is the first year that TEA does implement the automated AI that was in the news, and that's the reason for the drops across Texas. Reason B, yes and no? I think one...
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Is that where it notices you're doing poorly in a certain area, so it keeps hitting you with those questions?
I'm sorry?
What does the AI do? Does it, it notices that you're not doing well on a certain subject in science, so it keeps throwing those questions at you?
So a couple, yes. So the first thing on the reading side, it scores their writing. So that's what students have to respond. As before, it used to just be a reading test, now it's a writing test, and students have to respond. The AI scores their writing, right? So once it scores their writing, then it provides a score. So this is the first time that there is writing in 3-8. English 1 and English 2 have always had that portion of writing in their exams, but 3-8, that's very new to our teachers. Regarding science, I think it's a couple things. I first attribute it to, as you know, these are our fifth graders, science is tested in fifth, eighth, and biology. Our fifth graders, if you go back four years, were spent kinder first grade, second grade, online. So we are identifying those gaps because of that hands-on piece, and as we've seen them come up through the grade levels, we've seen two subjects be impacted. One is math, and one is science. And so we are closing those gaps to make sure that kids do have the hands-on and the academic vocabulary, but we are noticing that our cohorts of kinder firsts who spent it online are now in these grade levels, and it is acquiring that. In addition to that, we have new TEES. So we did implement new TEES. We're implementing both TEES at this time. This is the first time the state will test these new TEES. So we also set that differentiation within the new TEES for science across the board. So we, in May of last year, we trained all our teachers for new TEES. The implementation, we're continuously providing that PD, but it is a different. Now they're testing more the phenomenon in science versus the experimental science, so that is a lot of new content coming towards our teachers, but we, those dips were anticipated in that sense. I attribute it to those two things.
If there was something the board could do, what would that be? What would that look like?
I have had a wish list. There's a lot of things that we could do if we had a wish list, but we're very fortunate we have plenty of time, which is what we always want to provide to our teachers, additional staff development and understanding the TEES, making sure that science is taught all the way across every grade level, right? That's key. It shouldn't just be taught regularly and repetitive in fifth grade. It is a K4, 6, 7. Everybody does a job in science. So outside of your support, I think we have everything we need and will continuously, but this is a year that we are going to make sure, let's make sure those science TEES were addressed, since there was a lot of new within the assessments.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Any others?
Yes. Dr. Chacon, I'm looking at the slide. It says subject, reading, math, and science. What grade level are these students being tested at?
So math and reading starts third through eighth grade and then in high school, right? For algebra one. So, and science is only fifth and eighth grade.
So when you, when I'm looking at this fifty five percent in twenty twenty four, is that those two grades combined?
Correct.
Fifth grade and eighth grade?
Yes.
And so you would have the percentages for each grade level?
Yes, I have them. And remember, this is for your EB students only. So this is for your emergent bilinguals only.
Right, right.
This is not all students. So this is specifically to the emergent bilingual. So I go back to what I explained to Mr. Hagerty. These kids definitely need a lot of vocabulary, a lot of visuals, a lot of hands-on, because language, number one, is one barrier. I, I attribute a little bit to their, as they're going up through these babies worth that spent kinder online, first grade online. And so now that they're back in the routine for, I would say, a good couple of years now, the vocabulary, the hands-on experiments, all of that is key to their success. Because our emergent bilingual needs everything the regular student needs plus more.
Okay, and then social studies, is that high school level?
That's eighth grade specifically. And then high school is US history.
More questions? Yes.
Do you have one more question, since we were talking about vocabulary? Is it still, if they were to take the STAR test in Spanish, is that test still written in a way where the vocabulary is a whole lot harder in Spanish?
Yes, yes, it is. It's, the vocabulary for Spanish, science is much more rigorous than it is in the English. Now, our students in the dual language track, which are either at Valer del Valle or Eastwood, right? Those students do take biology. They have the instruction in Spanish, but they do test in English. But that is part of the dual language track.
Thank you.
I have one question too. So when you're talking about your teachers, where they are taking certification and stuff like that, can you kind of explain that, what that means to me? I'm, I'm a little confused.
So I'll let Ms. Russell elaborate too, if I have, if I missed something. But the certifications that Mrs. Skelton is talking to is regarding your dual language teachers. Specifically, that's the certification they need for you to teach bilingual students in elementary. Once they get to middle school and high school, which is six through twelve, it's an ESL endorsement, right? So our teachers are English teachers. That's what they're certified in. Take the ESL endorsements because they are serving EB students in the, through the RLA, through the language and reading language arts classrooms in there. So it is an additional certification that the state requires for them to have if they have emergent bilingual students in their classroom. Did I miss something?
No, but just to add on to that, in our elementary setting, in the event that a teacher does have an EB student in their class, they're also required to get an ESL endorsement. And for our sped students now, it used to be that you would teach them fully in, in English in the special education setting, but that's not the case anymore. If you do have a bilingual student in your special education class, the state does require that the teacher have bilingual certification or at the very least an ESL endorsement on a waiver.
And then what happens, because some of them took it and didn't pass, then what happens to the?
So we continue working with them. So they try again, right? So if they didn't pass this year, they come back to us. We offer plenty of professional development for them to pass. We have modules that they can do online if they don't want to come physically to our professional development. We have in-house professional development that they attend, and we offer all of that support. I will tell you that for the most part, our teachers are successful at passing, and we also have a very, I, I want to point out, for their district, our size, for the number of emergent bilingual students that we serve, we are one of the few districts that has the least waivers that we apply for. We've been working very hard, if you remember previous presentations, the number has gone down, to making sure that our teachers are certified and passing and, and ready to go to help our students. So nine elementary teachers across, for all elementaries is not, it's, it's not a big, big number. And seventeen on the high school and middle school side is also a relatively low number. We've, at one point, I remember we had, I want to say close to a hundred, Bobby, or more teachers. And so we've really been working with making sure that they have the certifications that they need and supporting them, most importantly. We also pay for that certification. So that is not, we, the teacher pays it when they test. Once they pass, we reimburse them. So it's something that we provide for them.
Dr. Chacon, in your opinion, Tell Pass was obviously done by computer in twenty twenty four. Last year was written. How do, how, how does, how do you feel that compares to both our teachers and our students having that change?
That's a big change. If you, I mean, you've been on the board now for a while, so you'll remember that Tell Pass has gone through significant changes, where before it was the teachers would score it, right? So the teachers were able to say, okay, I believe this student is at an intermediate level, an advanced level, an advanced high. So slowly but surely, in each of the domains, they've taken that and have developed it to where now it's either AI or it's through a computer test. So it does have an impact on our scores. And I think the biggest thing is on the listening and speaking side. Our students, they might know English, but, and they know English, but when they speak to the computer, their different dialects, the different things that catches it, and it might not score them the way they deserve. All of those little things matter. And so, again, it's a constant work, a constant making sure that the students practice. Many times, our students, they're in a room where they're testing the headphones, right? From everything, from a headphone to making sure that they capture everything are things that we're constantly working and getting better at.
Now, how does that compare to the state as they're doing the same thing as us?
So as a state, we're much better. We outscored the state, and our EB's outscore the EB's in the region. So even though we've had some drops and we have, we outscore our, our friends, our neighbors, and in comparison to TUC, because those who I will compare, we, we definitely outscore them in Tell Pass and in RLA, math, social studies, science. I mean, I know that, thinking of certain TUC districts, that their EB's are scoring in the five percent, ten percent tiles. And so we are very proud of the work our EB is doing. Lots of work in front of us, but I do feel confident that we serve our EB student better than anyone else. Our dual language model is obviously known across the city. Parents come to our district for that dual language, and we just need to continue making sure we get better at our teaks, addressing that vocabulary, like Mr. Hagerty says, addressing the science, making sure that students have the best experiences in their classrooms.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Dr. Chacon, I just want to clarify, you said that we have nine elementary teachers that are currently certified in seventeen high school?
Nine that we submitted for a waiver and seventeen ESL teachers, correct.
But you said usually it's at a hundred?
It, it started when the laws changed to make sure that all teachers, if they had an EB student, had to have the endorsement and the ESLs, yes. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but they started very high, and we worked to get them where they're at.
And you believe that number needs drastically increased to get closer to where we were before, at about a hundred?
We want it to decrease.
Oh, we want it to decrease?
Yes, we want it to decrease. We used to have about a hundred more teachers that we would apply for a waiver.
Okay, so this is a good thing?
This is a very good thing, that's, this is something we need to celebrate.
I'm sorry that I heard wrong.
Yeah, no, we have to sell, we want it to decrease.
I was like, whoa, we're really short.
Zero would be great. But of course, every year, there's one. And they're coming prepared from the universities now. They come now with the certifications they need. So that's a huge help too, that the universities, specifically UTEP, will make sure that they have those certifications prior to applying with this. So that's also a huge help. But I will give credit to our ALPS department, who really works with the teachers, brings them in, and also in collaboration with HR. They have a very good system where they immediately get the teacher, teach them, put them on modules, pay for their tests, things like that. And I think all of those things, working together has helped.
Okay, very good. It sounds like the biggest difference is that we have AI scoring our students. And then I also heard something very concerning. Let me make sure I got this right, or at least the way I understand it, that perhaps it might be a student's accent?
It could.
That they might have the right words and the right understanding, but the AI system is scoring them less? Is there any, is anybody addressing this concern? Are you able to speak to this a little bit more and how we can stay updated to how they're eradicating this problem?
So every year, I think if there's no one that advocates more for our regional EB is probably us. I do believe that some of the assessments, some of the standards that our EB students have, either a federal law or a state law, are a little bit biased and unfair. No other subgroup of students has to meet the requirements like our student, like our EB students. So, yes, to answer your question, we advocate, we have the opportunity to rescore as well too. So if we feel like a student, you know what? We really think that it was this, we have the opportunity to appeal that to TEA and rescore, or at least question more. Tell me why you scored them the way you scored them, right? So we do go through those opportunities and are constantly advocating for our EB students. Because I, I will tell you, in my opinion, they are the subgroup that I feel has to go through the most hoops, the most recommendation, the teachers as well too. I mean, all of these endorsements and all these things they have to go through, more than any other subgroup.
Well, thank you, Dr. Chacon, and for advocating, and anyone else that advocates for this, I certainly want to join. I'll be looking more into this, and I'll definitely be reaching out to state legislators and making sure that we are doing something because that is wrong.
Yeah, yeah, they, they have a lot of, they take two assessments. So your EB student takes STAR and they take Tell Pass every year until they reclassify. So by the time they're in high school, they've taken that assessment ten times.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to public hearing. We will, we will, we will now be open to public hearing. Dr. Delatorre, do we, will you lead us in the public hearing?
Yes, Vice President Bustillo would like to invite Chief Finance and Operations Officer, Ms. Lindley Camberne, to provide the report on School First.
Good evening, Vice President Bustillo, members of the board, and Dr. Delatorre. You may recall that every year, we bring to you what's called the FIRST Report, known as the Financial Integrity Rating System for Texas. There are four basic requirements. We'll delve into some of these a little more in just a few slides. But the four basic requirements insist that we bring to you an annual report that represents two years of fiscal information. And mind you, this is not this current fiscal year, but two years ago, and then last fiscal year. There are additional disclosures that are required, and I'll talk to you about those more in just a moment. We must conduct a public hearing, which we are complying with this evening, and then we must disclose the score. So from inception through last year, the district had received an A rating or superior achievement every year on the first system rating. For the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, for the first time, our district dropped from a ninety-two or an A to an eighty-eight, a high B. We'll talk about indicators seven and eight momentarily, and I'll describe to you exactly what caused the four-point decrease. Obviously, you would expect an A rating to be ninety to a hundred points. A B rating is eighty to eighty-nine points. And then there are C and F ratings as well. To even score, to even receive a score, you have to pass indicators one through five. So obviously, we've done that, and I will walk you through those indicators because I want you to know how important they are. But this year, for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, we received eighty-eight out of a hundred points as compared to ninety-two out of a hundred on the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. With regard to those additional required disclosures, these are hyperlinked items. So for ease of access to you and to the public, you can click on that hyperlink, and it will take you directly to these documents, which include the superintendent's contract, reimbursements received by the superintendent and board members, any outside compensation that the superintendent may have earned for professional consulting or any other personal services. Any gifts are required to be disclosed if they're received by executive officers or board members, and then any business transactions between YISD and board members. So as I mentioned, there are, or I haven't mentioned, there are twenty-one indicators. Numbers one through five must be passed to even proceed to receive a rating at all. Indicator number one says that we timely submitted our annual financial report. We've done that, of course, for the last two years, and so both indicators are marked, or both years are marked yes. Indicator number two is that we had to have a clean or unmodified opinion by the external auditor who reviewed our financial statements. And as you can see there, again, we complied with that in both fiscal years. Indicator number three indicates, says we haven't defaulted on any debt, and of course we have not. Indicator number four says we've timely paid any other governmental entity, whether it's the IRS, Texas Workforce, TRS, or any similar type entity. And of course, we've also done that. And then finally, indicator number five says that we have an unrestricted, not a negative net position on our balance sheet. And it wasn't scored in the first fiscal year because of pandemic-related consequences. And so I don't want to take you, this is a long presentation, it's posted online. I don't want to take you through all twenty-one indicators, I want to go straight to indicators seven and eight, which is where we dropped our two points. So indicator number seven is talking about how many days of cash did we have on hand at the end of twenty twenty-three? And you can see in the bottom left-hand of the slide, there's a calculation showing you what our cash and equivalents were on hand as opposed to our expenditures. In the far right column, you can see in the first fiscal year, we had ninety-three days of coverage. We dropped to eighty-three days of coverage in the next fiscal year. This is primarily related to stipends that were paid out at the end of the fiscal year. They were ESER stipends that came directly out of that as a part of our compensation plan, and it drew our cash down to eighty-three days of coverage. I'm, I'm pleased to say we have come back up some, but as you know, neighboring districts are struggling with cash flow, and it may be a problem for all districts in the very near future. So that's indicator number seven. Indicator, whoa, stuck, sorry. I got it now, guys. Okay, thank you. All right, is our current ratio. What are our current assets as compared to current liabilities? And to receive ten points, you need three times the coverage of your current debts. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we had five and a half times the coverage, so five and a half times more current assets than current liabilities. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and actually that is wrong, it's fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we had just under three times the coverage, three times more assets, current assets than current liabilities. So again, we dropped two points from ten to eight on that particular indicator. For all other indicators, we were very near, we were the exact same. These are the only two indicators where we dropped two points on each one. And with that, I will actually take any questions that you might have.
Who have any questions?
Obviously, we don't like being B-rated at anything, and we are working diligently to ensure that we bring back our A rating.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Thank you, Ms. Lindley, for this presentation. So we're down to a B rating. You expressed concern earlier this year. What's your level of concern heading into the new fiscal year? And will we be having workshops? I really appreciate it that we have workshops starting in January this year. Will we be doing the same this year?
Yes, absolutely, we will. I'll bring to you in January an overview of the budget process, the timeline, and kind of give you an idea of the bills that are being processed or already being filed at the state. It's an active legislative session. We've known since twenty nineteen, we haven't had an increase in the basic allotment. So no increase to state funding since twenty nineteen. That's two legislative sessions that have passed with no increase. So if you ask me my level of concern, it's pretty high, probably the highest it's ever been since I've been at the district, starting February twenty-ninth of twenty sixteen. If, if vouchers don't pass and the state doesn't release any of that pent-up funding, I foresee every district being in trouble. I, I actually think we'll see cash flow issues in the spring. And to make matters worse, we're going into a period where what they're deciding at the legislative session right now actually begins September first of twenty twenty-five. So will they make any funding decisions retroactive? I don't know. But without some relief from the state, yes, I'm concerned.
Do you foresee the board having to make tough decisions this fiscal year? And I guess I just hope these were presented with several options. I know it's going to be tough. There might be some cuts and some.
I think you make tough decisions all the time. I think these decisions will be tougher because we will be operating in the I think these decisions will be tougher, because we will be operating in the unknown. We will not have legislative decisions. It may be May before we get a good sense of what the legislature's going to do, if anything, with regard to funding. So yes, I think this will be a tough budget session.
Okay. Well, I hope to be a little bit more hands-on and involved in the upcoming year. I really want to explore some kind of options where, you know, maybe it's a win-win, maybe the sacrifices aren't that hard if we can figure, I don't know, a way to work smarter, maybe. I have no idea what it is, but I'll be looking for those kind of solutions, and I look forward to working with that and my colleagues. Thank you, Ms. Lindley.
We look forward to it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Nuss. Thank you.
Monica, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No. Miss Bustillos, we don't.
Thank you. We will now close the public hearing and continue with the board workshop. Agenda review. We will now discuss the agenda items listed in the posted notice regular meeting of the VSLA Independent School District Board of Trustees for December 11, 2024, and related recommendation motions with the Superintendent Executive Cabinet, and receive responses to questions and/or quests, questions for additional information throughout, through the superintendent in preparation for deliberation in action on said items at the December 11, 2024 Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stop me if you have any questions or you wish to pull an item. Consent. Consider approval of the minutes for the Board, for the Board of Trustees Workshop Regular Board Meeting on November 13, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. Number two, accept the monthly financial statements and bond projects reported for October Action items. Does, does, and I, what is that? Designee, designee for the Texas Education Agency Secure Environment System, T E A S E. Any questions? Comments?
I have one. I was just kind of curious.
Mr. Hagerty is.
Is that just a, an API that we're requesting access to, to get data from the Texas Education Agency? It looks like there was like 30 different programs that were available, but it's all just like a bunch of data based off of which program it is you wanted to access?
If you don't mind, I'll ask Ms. Diana Moye to come to the front and help us.
Yes, have Ms. Moye, come on, come on down.
Good evening, members of the board. Diana Moye, Associate Superintendent for TISE. To answer your question, yes, there's about 30 applications on TEAL, and the request to be the superintendent's designee is so that we can thoroughly evaluate the requister, ensure that they're the appropriate person or the person responsible for that specific application, ensure their credentials, that they are using a district website, and they have the priority to be given that confidential access to those types of reports.
Do we use any of those programs, or are we just pulling data from the programs?
The TEAL-specific program? We do. So, so some of the, for example, some of the applications that might be requested through me would include, the most familiar one that you might recognize is the class-size waivers, for example, that you approve as a board. That would be uploaded to TEAL, then someone from my department would have to go in, approve, but I have to grant them access to ensure that they have the appropriate profile to, to upload that type of information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Any other questions? We'll move on. Move on to the pulled consent agenda items. None. And then closed session. We'll discuss, discussion of district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. And number two, YISD, SSISD interlocking agreement.
That's, that's Eric.
Now, let's move on to the consent. The order of the agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion on the, on the remaining consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration?
Mr. Vice President, I move that we approve the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
Thank you, Ms. Wadraff. Hold on. Is it two times? Or one?
You've got it true. I'm sorry.
There it is. Thank you, Ms. Wadraff, and we have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Five yes, zero no. Now we're moving on to the action items. Designee for the Texas Education Agency Secure Environment System, T E A S E. Is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have an electronic motion? Mover is Mr. Hagerty, and a second by Ms. Wadraff.
Yes, sir. Mr. Vice President, I move to authorize Diana Moye, Associate Superintendent of Technology, Texas Superintendent's Designee for approving staff request access one or more TEA web applications to the Texas Education Agency Secure Environment System for the period of December 24th, oh, December 20, 24 to December 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. And this passes 5-0. Now to a closed session. The Board of Trustees has determined that the closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss items set forth in the posted agenda for, agenda for the state. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551001, including not and limited to the sections proposed covered by the following sections of the Texas Government Code, 5510717273747682127821838487 and 89. Should any action, decision, or vote be required with, regarding any matter considering the closed session, the final action, decision, or vote shall, shall be an open meeting or substantively public meeting with notice. The board will now go into closed session in the Rio Grande Room at 7:09.
Let me see where we're at, okay. I reconvene this meeting of the Board of Trustees with Mr. Hagerty, Mr. Shane Hagerty, Mr. Chris Hernandez, Mr. Mike Dwyer, Ms. Connie Woodruff, and myself, Charlie Bustillos, Action items after the closed session. Number one, consider approval of district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. May I have a motion?
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Hagerty?
Can you give me to it?
Oh. Our mover is Ms. Woodruff, our second, and Mr. Hagerty.
I'm sorry. Mr. President, I move to approve the district-wide intruder detection audit report findings as discussed in closed session.
Thank you. Five in favor, zero no. Thank you. Now, we'll move to action item number two, SSYISD interlocking agreement. May I have a motion?
He did it.
Mr. Vice President, I move to approve the interlocal agreement related to YISD/SISD boundary issue, including district of residence for students living in boundary areas as discussed in closed session.
Mr. Hagerty was a mover, second by Chris Hernandez. We have the motion passes, five yes, zero no. Our votes have been casted. We're done. Let's see, okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.